The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirsten, can you call the roll?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Hemineson.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Lister.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Conaway.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santino.
Here.
Okay. Now take a moment of meditation. Okay. And Kirsten, do we have anybody in the meeting for public participation?
I didn't see anyone.
Don't see anybody?
No.
All right. Let's move into new business. Do you want to make a motion to... Do I have to be first, or how do we...
I'd like to move that we go into executive session for item 2B, discussion of a personnel matter, as we have the attorney here for that matter. That would be with the board, I believe Ms. Manning, Superintendent Sarah, and pardon me, I forgot the attorney's name.
Mr. Kevin Roy will join us shortly.
Okay, Kevin.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One for 2B.
For the personnel matter, is that... Kevin Roy, who's joining?
Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy.
I apologize for not speaking loudly enough. We're going to 2B first, since you're both in the person, Attorney Murphy and Attorney Wesley. So this is going into executive session to discuss item 2B with those two attorneys, Ms. Manning, Superintendent Sarah, and the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are back in session.
I'm back.
Motion to go back into executive session for a different matter of business to discuss ratification of Local 871, the contract between the Board of Education and Local 871, the New Britain Federation of Teachers. That'll be the full board, Mr. Kane, Ms. Manning, Superintendent Sarah, and Attorney Roy will be joining us remotely.
Second.
Did we want Mr. Foran as well? And Mr. Foran.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are back in session. It is 8:02.
7:02.
7:02, sorry, I never set back that watch. Still sitting in the drawers when I grabbed it this morning. All right, so our next item is special recognition.
Motion to...
Oh, yes, right, yes, a motion to...
Motion to approve the contract between Local 871, the New Britain Federation of Teachers, and the Consolidated School District of New Britain Board of Education for the periods starting... Sorry, I need to pull up the actual dates. Starting July 1st, June 2022, and ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain, okay. So nine to one, motion carries. Our next item is recognition of two of our board members who... This is their last meeting.
Don't smile behind your mask. Still trying to tell me what to do.
I know. Who's gonna check her after?
So Nick and Violet have been key players on this board as chairs of committees. And Violet has been on for four years and Nick for eight years. During that time, he's also served as chair. And I have to say I'll miss you for being there to correct me when I forget to do things on the agenda and providing guidance on parliamentary procedure. So it's really been a pleasure to serve with both of you and have both of you in the leadership team of officers of the board. And now I will...
Do you get to go around? Everyone gets to speak?
Anybody else would like to say a few words? Okay, Gail?
Yep, so Nick and I, we've had some good ones. We've had some good ones over the last six years. But, you know, I appreciate your guidance a lot, right? Your leadership is just amazing. I'm gonna miss you, but you know, I'm probably gonna text you over the next two years, like, you know. Can I really vote on this? I really appreciate it, like, I appreciate you. And I mean, we've had our... We've definitely had our battles. They've been good ones. Violet, same, like, I don't think we've ever had a battle, but I, you know, on hot topics or sensitive topics, you've always been able to give me an honest opinion, right? Gail, you're wrong, or you're right, or this is probably how you should handle it. I've always appreciated that with you. And I'm gonna miss you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm taking my mouth. And I think I speak on behalf of Cabinet. Nick, you've been with me, and we were here before I even came on. And Violet came on just a little bit after I started my tenure as superintendent. And I think as a superintendent, this was... It's a dream board, right? Because it was truly one voice. You know, it wasn't political. It has not been. And I think as a superintendent, I've appreciated that, that we truly, truly have put students first. From policy changes to just the movement in five years. And, you know, we had to recover from some tough days, right? And I can't thank you enough for building a foundation, a very strong foundation for future generations, for our current students, our current teachers, and future generations. And I think for those remaining and the new that are coming on, we need to honor that and know what's best for our children. And, you know, it's, I'll say it 100 times, we need to model, right? We can have open disagreement, that's fine, if it's always in the name of children. And agree to disagree at times, but always keep our eyes focused. So I can't thank you enough, because you've really been, in terms of teaching me and my Cabinet, I think back to no subcommittees to subcommittees. Right, you know, even today is an example of taking things off the agenda because it didn't go through a subcommittee. But this board built that structure, and that's huge. So thank you on behalf of Cabinet.
Are you gonna cry?
No.
I would just like to echo that. I learned so much from both of you, and your knowledge is going to be sorely missed.
I told her I was gonna text her during the meeting.
I guess I'll say something.
Now I'm worried.
And he's like, let me break this up.
So just keeping it straight and honest has been wonderful. And tell me, we didn't agree. As long as I can have my say, and you say what you have to say, I can go off the air. And I understand strong opinions, because I can have strong opinions. So speak your truth, and I'm sorry, also. And hopefully we got rid of a lot of issue with dress code. That's all I have to say for one.
And I would just like to say, as one of the newer members, that I certainly appreciated your guidance and your warmth and your willingness to share insight to kind of help guide me as a newbie, and you will be missed. Thank you.
And I'll just echo pretty much everyone here in saying that I've only been on the board for a year, but I truly learned a whole lot from both of you. And I look forward to continuing to learn from you and carry the work you've done in the past three years for me. Thank you.
Soon as the last election, when I came on the board, happened, you know, COVID hit a few months later, right as we were getting ready to delve into, you know, board retreats and, you know, team building. And of course, you know, a lot of that, everything just got pushed to the side because we had a pandemic on our hands. We did eight years ago, a long time. And the policies... The policy overhauls, nothing short of amazing. So thank you for that work. I mean, that was truly yeoman's work, go back to the '70s. Take care of stuff. Yeah, sitting around cleaning those up. Fortunately, I wasn't, you know, on your committee for a while, and so I can't speak to your work. I keep your service as well.
Yes, I think boards going forward will benefit from your re-institution or instituting subcommittees. That only a few of us have been... We're on the board when we used to meet until 10 o'clock and then have the motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock. And that was the norm for meetings. So some of you don't know how lucky you are that Nick pushed for that. All right. Anybody else wanna say anything? Yeah, Nick, we'll let you talk.
Let's go do it now, we're during the board report, so... I just wanna say that the past eight years have been a remarkable experience. I truly believe that public service, holding elected office, volunteering your time for a board of education for any organization is one of the ways we can give back to our community. And when I got involved in politics, I was very worried about some of the partisanship that tends to happen. You know, New Britain has a bit of a reputation when it comes to politics. I've heard it described as the Beirut of politics, right? It's rough. And, you know, through just happenstance, we ended up at one point having a 5-5 board. And I think that helped push us towards a more bipartisan place. But I have valued the relationships that I've had with my fellow board members over the years, those currently serving and those who have moved on to other things, no longer serving. We've had disagreements. But I still respect those people, even the ones I've disagreed with on issues. And we can fight, and we can fight hard on things that we believe in. That's what we should do. But I don't think that this board, especially in the past five, six years, has been partisan. Our divisions on issues have been anything but, with weird lines sometimes showing up. And I think the board has generally kept what's in the best interest of students at heart. And I hope and I pray that going forward, the board continues to do that. Because this is not always the norm. I work with teachers and know teachers from around the state, from around the country. Some of the stories I hear of, things that happen at boards of education, like... I will not speak to that. But other places too, other places too. Like, there are deeply divisive, politically motivated boards. And we've taken on some really big challenges in my time on the board, putting in committees and making the meetings more efficient. I'm glad we were able to do that. Changing the way we do our policies so that we can actually find them. I'm glad that we do that. But the board's also been willing, in a bipartisan effort, to take on challenging things. Going after the city for special education money that should have been coming to the Board of Ed all along. That was not a partisan issue for the board. Republicans and Democrats both said, no, we need to do what's right for our children. Putting out to bid a contract that had not gone out to bid for transportation in decades, decades. And, you know, through an audit and review, we found out was costing the district millions of dollars it didn't need to. That was not a political issue. It definitely had political blowback, and members of both parties felt pressure to cave and give a contract to someone who was not the low bidder. End of the day. We had to stick to our guns, we had to take that to court. And the board, Republican and Democrat, together, supported it, because it was the right thing to do. And if we keep that as our guide star, doing the right thing to do for the district, doing the right thing to do for children, I think the board will continue to go far. And I hope that this board continues to advocate for our students. And I hope this board continues to advocate for more funding from the city. I've advocated for that since before being on the board, through three prior administrations. It's not a political issue. It's about what's right. I will miss my time here. I have learned so much from professional colleagues, from the teachers, the administrators, fellow board members, people who have opened my eyes to perspectives and viewpoints I'd never considered. It's made me a better person. It's made me a better board member. It's made me a better teacher. And if we can continue to do that, it'll make the city a better city. Thank you.
I have nothing to talk about. It has been my pleasure to serve. You know, I have absolutely learned about, you know, procedures and definitely came in not knowing how the board would be, because I think, as Nick said, the board was not always as cohesive as it was. And I know there were rumors floating around, and I was thought to be this person that was gonna come in and cause all chaos, or whatever. And I obviously don't need to be on the board to cause any chaos I'm trying to do. So, you know, I think that very quickly we all found out, got to know each other, and found out that we were all here for the right reasons. And so, yeah, it's been my pleasure to be able to have, you know, discussions. When we disagree, you know, we know that this is a board. We operate as a body together. Everyone has a voice. You then have a vote, and what happened, happened. That is what the board decided as a body. And because of that, we have been able to do so many things that, as I always bug Nancy and call her up, and she knows this is the one thing that I constantly scold about, is so many things that don't even make it to the public eye, right? We're making constant progress and doing good things for kids. And that has been a result of the collaboration of this body and, you know, not of any single person. And I think it's, you know, it's awesome when we start to know... Everybody here has a niche. Everybody here has, right, like, a perspective that we're really tied about. And when you start seeing, like, when something comes to, you know, me, to committee, I'm going, I understand the justification here. Now talk to me about the money, because when you go to Gail, I already know she's gonna ask you this and this. Let's do it. Or when Gail will jump into something and say, oh, the policy, but how about we change that she-he to there, right? Because we're doing that. And when we all kind of started adopting each other's lenses for the better of the whole body. So, you know, it's been my pleasure to advocate for all of New Britain's kids, including my treasures that are still in this district. And I'll miss it, but I'm glad to have had my time.
Let's move on.
Oh, me.
You are the superintendent. At least still.
I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna be brief. Kevin Dion's gonna be brief, because you're just gonna... Can you just come up and just give a quick synopsis of this weekend and what the weekend brought as far as cameras goes? Camera goes. Kevin Kane, you might as well stand now and start walking up to talk just for a quick minute on the update on school construction projects.
While he's... Go ahead.
Sure, so this weekend, we began the camera conversion over at the high school that was approved last month. Well over 100 cameras were replaced and have been, are up and running currently. We hope to have the rest completed by the end of next week. We did exteriors today. But all critical cameras, cameras that are mostly used during our school days and have the most student activity, were identified prior week. And those were, we made sure that those were included in the 100 that were done over the weekend. Happy to say that the system has been up and running. We had no issues today. We've actually used it a couple of times for some questions on where people were in the building, and everybody's happy about it. I think the principal's comment was, wow, this is wonderful. So I wish he was here, but I'm sure he can pipe in at the moment and let us know. But it was, it's great, it's a great system. And actually, I'm gonna be talking later about another school that has completely failed that we need to do next, so I'll speak to that.
And just to shout out to our crew for being in on over the weekend, our security team, they came in, they were onboarded over the weekend.
We had security with us. We had training that occurred. We wanted to make sure that Monday, as soon as school started, that the people that used the cameras and sat in front of them the most understood how to use them. So we had actually training yesterday as well. So we did a lot of the planning, it worked out great.
Also, when you're gonna demo them. I know. I got a clip over the weekend, it was pretty cool there. I just wanna also, and again, you'll see it's long. I gave you an update from each department, but I just wanted to highlight and lift up a few things. I thought it would be time, and we'll do it again, I think, next month. Cabinet finance, because we have new board members coming on. I'd like to keep them updated as far as the closing out of the capital projects. So if you could give a brief overview and then...
For members who recall, back in September 2019, two years ago, we discovered we had 13 school construction projects that were still open years back. This list, part of superintendent's report, is a list of all the open projects out there. There's four... I'm not sure this is on.
It doesn't work.
Okay, there's 14 projects on this list. Forget the last one. So there's 13 projects originally we're working with. You'll see that 11 of those projects, one looks like it's closed, it's final, so there should be a payment. The other 10 are audit in progress, which means they're sitting at the state, and the state is auditing. And so there's a holdback, maybe 5% or whatever, it should be coming back eventually. There's two projects out there that right now have blanks, so we're looking into that as to where those stand. That's, one is the admin building, the other one is the alternate behavior center. When we brought Construction Advocacy in, they worked with Ray Moore to close these projects. They're alleging that these two projects were handled by Ray. I don't think they were or were not. So they're actually contacting the state to see where they stand in those two open projects. Was anything filed with them? If not, we'll be working on those. You'll see at the bottom, Smalley project, that was from Mr. Moore in Newfield, we're working on that project. It was, our understanding was closed, it's not closed right now. So what happens, these are estimated payments. So all these projects have estimated payments, so something's missing there, I'm not sure why. But when it says estimated payments, it means that the state probably made the 95% of the dollar payment. There's probably some more paperwork that needs to be finalized, and then needs to go through an audit. So there's really three projects out there that we're gonna have to look into and see where we stand. But we're doing pretty well. I mean, you know, out of 13 projects originally, 11 are gone, it looks like, or are in progress. Two are open, not sure what happened with those. And Smalley, we're finding out still needs to be closed.
And the money, the dollar amount next to it is money, tax that have been cut from the state and gone to the city.
Yes, and you're gonna see that, so audit in progress. Usually there's dollar amounts that are still sitting here. So if you all recall, when I tried to educate in this, usually what happens with construction projects, there's always a 5% holdback. So if, let's call it a $10 million project, let's say it's 80% reimbursement, and if everything's eligible, the state always holds back 5%. Then when they go through audit paperwork, then they cut you the differential of 5%. Sometimes it's less, because they find out things were ineligible, or they find out things that they thought were ineligible, not eligible. So there's probably some extra dollars coming forward, but we're not sure why. And they go right to the city.
Can you talk just one minute, too, while you're standing, about the transportation update a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't have the time.
Oh, I do. Would you have me speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'm flipping about, but I just think it's important. We are still, we still have a shortage on drivers, so we do. But I have to say, both of our vendors, both for student and specialty, are able to maintain the coverage of all scheduled routes. It's with people working late, working double time, so... And that's important to note, just for future conversations that we're gonna have in finance, hopefully next month. You know, a lot of it is, you know, people are stealing from one district to the next. People are pretty desperate these days across the state. You know, you saw on the current, maybe two weeks ago, one out of four teachers is resigning from the Harvard Public Schools. You know, it's a real issue across state. So I'm really grateful for both of the transportation companies. They're working really hard. Yeah, so that's it. And again, there's more there, you can read up on it. Thanks, Kevin, very much. And I wanted Marielle, just to speak briefly about Saturday. It was the first time ever that we've ever had a recruitment fair. So if you could just speak to that. So while the cameras were being installed, Marielle was there with her team.
It was a busy day on Saturday. So we had our first in-person recruitment fair since before the pandemic. Its design was with a preregistration format with a bit of a speed dating twist, if you will, where there were mini-interviews that happened on site. We're happy to report that there were 32 people that came through the door in the three-hour event. 27 are gonna move forward as possible hires. Four certified staff, 16 paras, two teaching assistants, four BSAs, and one LPN. So we're gonna replicate that format as well in the spring for a larger audience for our spring recruitment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then Mike, if you're good, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the culture and climate, because that's sometimes when we get feedback from families, it's when I'm hearing from some of you and talking about culture and climate, especially at our secondary school. Mike, did you wanna talk about it a little bit? But I promised the rest of the committee I don't know.
So I don't think it's any secret that we, like everybody else, have faced challenges with the reentering fully, especially at our largest schools, the two large middles and the high school. There's a brief summary in the superintendent's report. Kind of tier one has been all the schools instituting structures to supervise students more closely in the hallways or monitor students more closely in the hallways. As that became an issue, the middle schools have tightened up at times, and that sought to kind of scale back after providing some instruction with students about expectations in schools. in schools, remembering that really two-thirds of the students in each middle school are new to that school, given the fact that the closure, so the seventh graders and sixth graders are all new to both the middle school structure and a school that large. Additionally, students who are kind of tier two have been identified through that process of tightening up in the halls to be in need of more support, have been identified. We've been working with the administrative team, the pupil services department, to support those students. And to be totally transparent, there's a handful of students at each school who continue to struggle despite intervention. And we're meeting to look individually at those students and determine what more supports they can have, we can provide for them, either within the building or in some cases, looking for ways to educate them in settings that are more appropriate for their needs.
Thanks, Mike. And there is a page in there, and I won't go into it too much, but we're in our third cycle. It's called our Community Engagement Team, which has been a real success, right, community? It's something that we've put together to make sure that we had all represented community agencies at the table when social workers are bringing a case of concern. And it's held right here in this boardroom. We have Mal from next door, we've got HRA, we've got all the necessary people at the table to support a family and a student who are struggling. And so, it runs very, you'll see the procedure, we put it there. We do it every two weeks, we're able to hear two cases per session. So, we've had six successful interventions, helping families connect right with housing if they need that, or whatever the services that they need, that's what we're doing. So, that's one, you know, we're really proud of. And I have to thank Joe Vavrecheck and Jamie Armat, because they're the ones that have spearheaded this. You know, there's a real need, you know, COVID or not COVID, so we're addressing that. You can see also in your packet that we are now in the second session of Elevate, which is our after-school, out of schooltime programming. And our numbers, actually, from the first session at 150 at the elementary has gone up to close to 500, 450. So, we've tripled. And again, slower and steady, a slower progress at the middle, but not too, or 612, not too bad to have close to 200 kids in brief 612 that are coming out either after school or on Saturdays. So, we're pleased with those numbers. We've worked really hard at, you know, I can't thank the staff enough. They're incredibly hardworking people, and they just deserve some time to be told how good they are, right? And I think we try to say, and I would appreciate any of you, just communicating to them their efforts, because it's tough work right now. But we're getting there, we're getting there, slow and surely. So, any other questions? If you read this at home, or shoot me an email, shoot me an email, but probably be more than you.
I did have just one quick question, if I could. I know that when Mr. Form was just speaking to the culture and the climate
Yep.
in the schools, is what is being enforced at Slade the same thing as what's being enforced at Pulaski? I'm saying, looking, comparing apples to apples, right? Because New Britain High School is its own entity, but like, from one school to the next.
From the two big middles? Yes. I'm gonna say yes with a caveat, right? And so, the resources, they may be a little different depending on the style of leadership. And, you know, we have a phrase that we use often, it's freedom within fences, right? These are the parameters. But every leader is individual, just like every classroom teacher is gonna put a little bit of a different spin to it, which is okay. It causes good conversation when the two admins get together, compare, right? Well, what are you doing differently, and what can I do? So, yes, with a caveat of, you know, I will say, definitely Pulaski started, did you want to say something? Pulaski started something, Slade thought, "That looks good, we're gonna try that, too." So, it's kind of a pick and point. Did I get that?
Yeah, I mean, both are dealing with how much movement to allow students as a core issue in their, they've collaborated, you know, it's not totally in sync. As things improve, they allow more movement, so it doesn't necessarily be a rock step. But certainly, they're collaborating, and that's, you know, the way they're doing it, as the superintendent said, there's some slight nuanced difference, but it's really around how much support students need during transitions. We found from the beginning of the year, unstructured time was not conducive to the needs of all these students coming back new to the school. So, how to create structures during transition times? They're doing similar things, but not exactly the same, and they're actually collaborating around what's worked, so that they've also learned from each other as part of their process.
So, a quick question, right now, are they all, like, all the students are moving in the hallway from one class to the next in both of the schools?
Right now, right now, they're moving from one class to the next generally. I can't say it's 100% the same, but they're, but both schools have movement during the day, as opposed to there were times when teachers were moving
Correct.
at Slade. That has been phased out at Slade. Pulaski, there was times when they were not moving as well. That has been phased out over the last couple of weeks as well.
Okay, so, right now, at least they're able to get that interaction, hey, how you doing, hi, find their friends, and get to the next class.
The interaction's limited, but they are moving. They're moving in a supervised manner. So, there are times when they're interacting cafeteria, Jim, but they are supervised in both as they move, but they are certainly moving. They certainly can see their friends, but they need to, they need to learn to get from point A to point B without too much socialization. So, that's part of the learning process.
No, I got that. I was just concerned based on what was written on here, I was just trying to see if they were leveling off the playing field as far as, you know, the same punishment for one school for the other, and if they are.
Can I just say, I think it's important that it wasn't presented as punishment. It was presented as structure and learning how to live in an environment with 900 students. And I know both principals, you know, when they, when they found a few teachers saying, "Well, you guys have to get better at this so we can let you move," it's, no, it's our responsibility to teach you to live in this environment that's very different than the environment that two-thirds of you were in last time you were out together in school.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say something, too. You know, I have grandkids in the school system, and I have one at Slade who's in eighth grade, and one at New Britain High School who is in 10th grade, this is her first year actually being in the high school. And I've always said this about the high school, it's like two schools in one, because the experience that my granddaughter in 10th grade is having is different from the stuff that you're hearing on the news, because she comes home every day, and she has a positive attitude. And when I ask her, "Was there a fight today?", she'll say, "I don't know, I didn't see a fight," you know, because she goes to her classes. If she sees large clouds gathering, she goes a different way. And she's having a great experience. And when we had to shut the school down for a day, she was in tears about not being able to go to school. And the one at Slade, the other day was sick, and I had to take her to the doctor, she wanted to go back to school, even though the doctor said, "You don't have to, I can write you a note." She went, "No, I want to be back, I want to take her to lunch." She didn't want lunch, because she wanted to be back at school. So, you can still get a good education in New Britain, and I think we, as parents, have to set the example for our kids. They don't have to react to all that crap that's going on. They need to go and learn. And that's why I tell my grandkids, and they said, "Grandma, why are you always telling us what not to do, we act like we don't know how to act?" And she said, "It's because we act one way at home, we don't do that." We've learned, we're not stupid. So, you know, the parents, we've gotta take some responsibility, too. The school cannot do it all. If you want them to teach your children, that's what the teachers are there for. They're not there to take care of all the stuff you're not dealing with at home.
Well, I challenge my kids every day to tell me something good about school. And that's actually what their allowance is based on. Don't tell anybody, but that's what I do. And so, they actually have to come back with a good report from, you know, "Tell me something that you learned at school today." And we just keep it engaging around our dinner table, and it has, I started it just kind of as like a ha-ha years ago with my kids, and it's turned into something that is just wonderful, because I have three all at once at Slade. And so, they all always have different perspectives, but they have always had something positive to say. So, I can't, well, small exception, but either way, they've always had something positive, because I challenge them to be invested in what they're doing and they're learning. So, see, and I tried offering the lunch, too, and I got the no, let me just go back to school, too.
Yes, Nick.
Just to touch on what Ms. Parker said, I think it's important to also remember, and this has come up time and time again, how we are portrayed in the media is so much different than the reality of what's actually going on in our schools on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, the media is going to portray what sells, and social media is going to portray what gets clicks, and what gets likes, and what gets interaction, right? So, a lot of what we see out there is very negative, there's a lot of positive. Doesn't mean it's all great, doesn't mean there aren't things to work on, but...
Okay. Anything more in your committee report?
I'm all set.
Okay. Committee reports. Finance?
Finance, you will see a lot on the consent agenda, but I always like to call out donations. So, we have a donation for 1,400 for the New Britain Transitional Center. They do it in their store as like an incentive. That's from Jim and Lisa Dupore. And then, oh, do I have the number right? But it was donors choose from Lego Spikes in $2,065. You'll see a lot on consent this, we did a lot of work in committee last, last week, two weeks ago.
Okay. Policy?
There are a number of things from policy, speaking of cleaning up things and all of that. So, there's a couple that we're gonna strike, mostly just combining and cleaning up existing policy. There is one that the superintendent that we had reviewed, very minor changes to it, but the superintendent's requested that we send it back to policy, because they were having, our attorneys look at the admin regs for it, and want to make sure that the stuff that should be in the regs aren't ending up in policy and vice versa. So, that's gonna go back for another pass-through committee.
Okay. Curriculum?
Curriculum did not meet. They have a lot of updates and reports coming up for the new board curriculum.
And personnel?
We had some new position requests that we went over, and some revised, revision of job instructions. And so, quite a few items on the consent agenda this week.
Okay. And are there any board reports?
Mine, it's just quick. So, I know for, I think boys soccer is playing in the state tournament tomorrow, or is it today? Is it today? Today's volleyball. Today's volleyball, and I did already hear that they did make the first, they made it to the first round, but they did lose, unfortunately. Football, their, and band, it's their senior night, Friday night, and homecoming. And then, I did take part in the diversity, equity, and inclusion on the fourth, really looking forward to what's next, because it was a great conversation on how to engage parents, but not quite sure we got to that what's next, and I'm looking forward to that part of it.
I wasn't able to attend, unfortunately, due to other child, other child having something at the same time, but my daughter, New Britain High Marching Band, just did an exhibition and won the U.N. Championships on Wednesday. We rescheduled from the rain out on Saturday, but there were 38 bands from around New England competing, and New Britain didn't compete, but they were, since they were the host of veterans, they did the exhibition first thing on Wednesday to kick off the event. It was a pretty big deal, and I hear they got a good reception and played very well, and, you know, there's a different style than everybody else, so I think people got a kick out of seeing, you know, what they do and how they're different. So, just wanted to give a shout out to the band.
Appreciate their difference.
Can I just give a shout out to Slade? I know Mike, three of mine go there, but they have been doing a phenomenal job with communicating with us as parents. Verdi's been messaging all parents, really, maybe he's just putting it on blast every two days, giving us an update, really, just how they're doing. Just, you know, like, hey, this is, we've got less kids that are causing interruptions, but if you have any questions, and here you go, this is what will be going on, and just really celebrating some of the little things, which is important. And I think sometimes when you just get down to fuck, I just wanna be able to celebrate something all the time. So, I just wanna send a shout out to, you know, to Maisie and his team, and, I'm sorry, to Verdi, Maisie and his team, and just being able to, oh my God, say thank you 1,001 times, number one. Number two, is I, too, was on that phone call for the community conversation
Yep.
and identify just some areas that we could do better next time, but don't worry about it, I put them on there, my comments. But I just wanted to say thank you for that, because it's not often where you say, "Hey, let's just tackle this among the Hispanic community," which is kind of funny, because we were discussing everything, and only two people were silent, like, Spanish-speaking for themselves, or saying what they were saying, but Wilda's always, she's really good about that, where she'll say something and then say it in Spanish for the people in the room that don't understand her. And that was wonderful. So, I was looking for ways that we could get to a next step. And one thing that I have had, I've said from the beginning, was Orlando Ruiz at Lincoln, who does a phenomenal job connecting with our Hispanic community and our Hispanic youth. If there's any way that we can put him together with Wilda, be able to have some sort of a program for parents, bridge that with, I'm just saying, this is my own two cents, when you're looking at the strengths and the weaknesses, how can we actually challenge ourselves as parents? Let's put a program together, almost like a PLTI or a parent C for parents and be, yeah, Parent Leadership Training Institute, okay, Seeking Excellence in Education. Something that's gonna give you a couple different modules, not just, you know, maybe we can get together and eat ethnic food, I don't know. But something that is going to bring us to that next steps as a community, as we're in person, as we're, you know, just getting together and sharing. So, I thought that was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to get the conversation going.
I will give all the compliments back to the staff, thank you.
Thank you, Slade.
Joe?
I just wanted to provide an update with the Wellness Committee. We met a few weeks ago, we're meeting again next week. Since the halal menu came about, we received 291 requests from parents to receive halal food, and that actually is gonna start this week. So, Jeff and Whitson's has been doing a really excellent job in meeting those requests. A few more updates, based off the school meal survey that we had last year, we began to provide in different types of food for school meals. Whitson's is now serving boar's head salads. We are offering pinto beans, Jamaican beef patties that were made right in Hartford, as well as plantains in the school meals. And I do wanna recognize that Whitson's is facing a lot of supply chain issues, so they're working really hard to make sure our kids are well-fed with very limited options that's available out there. Hopefully, that will improve in the next few months, but they're definitely working hard over there. Just one, a couple other board reports. I just want to recognize everyone that attended Lights On After School. I know it was in the superintendent's report, but that was a really great event with over 300 children that came out to Wana Hill Park. All of the providers were there, and the kids had a great, great day. And recognizing what after-school programs really mean is important. Just as a provider, I know that a lot of the children that attend after school is one of the reasons they go to school in the first place. I've had lots of families and children say, like, they go to school so they can stay after school. I don't want that to be the most, main factor for them to go to school, but if it gets them there, then that's all the better. And then, one more shout out to Gaffney Elementary School for their strides in attendance. In the month of October, the Class with Dust Attendants was able to dress Miss Fazio as a mummy, as well as Tiggy the Tiger. And I only know this because I'm really good friends with Tiggy, so...
I just want to say for the school lunches, my granddaughter loves food, and she came home the other day, when she texted me from Schools of Obrama, they had barbecue chicken and cornbread, and that cornbread was moist. And their chicken Alfredo, she only likes it from Chili's, but somehow another day they did something that was there at the high school that she really loves, so.
I just want to say that, speaking of Mr. Ruiz, Mr. Ruiz, Ms. Polly, had a trunk-or-treat at Lincoln that was fantastic. It was a really good event, well-attended, nice, straightforward, done outside, lots of fun. I also had the great pleasure of sending my son to his very first middle school dance at Howl's. which made me feel old, but he had, he had a fantastic time. And the kids, like, the kids, as they were coming out, just being able to be back in the schools again and doing some of those functions and having those opportunities, you know, it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
My nephew also came back from that Howls dance with good reports. He was sleeping over that night while he was with us, so I got to hear all about it, yeah. One more band shout-out. The K-Nets were able to perform in a music video with a French song, a social media star, basically. So, that was pretty cool, because they'll be, they'll be posted all around the world.
That's amazing. I know, it's pretty cool. We better buy pink drumsticks for all of our players.
Okay. Any other board reports? Let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Why are you always looking at me? It's the majority of it's mine.
Okay. Going once, going twice. All right. Consent agenda is passed, let's move to new business.
So, make a motion to approve the two fifty John Downey Drive. So, yeah, make a motion to approve the two fifty John Downey Drive lease.
Second.
I see him coming to the podium, so I know he's gonna... Because I know we talked about it in committee, and I think people want to kind of hear what our plan is for the space.
So, as I came to the board, the last month, the month before, we spoke about the need for space in the district. There are two properties we're looking at. One of those is one for production, this is two fifty. This is regarding space within the district. Currently, our buildings are maxed out. When you look around, even in this building, you look what's in our basement, you look around, what keeps coming in through the door, we do have storage over. Smiley, with COVID, we're definitely tasked with making sure that we have enough custodial and PPE. Those supplies are needed for day-to-day operations. But there are those items that we just cannot store all the time. We, when you look at where we have containers, so there's furniture, there's curriculum where there's books, and there's things that we have to keep. There's summer programs where we need, we'll use them during the summer school. But we have to keep them dry, we have to keep them safe, we have to keep them, summer is easily accessible, so we know what we have in the district. When you start breaking items up around the schools, we forget how many we have and where we are. Our inventory just doesn't carry out. So, what this property is, is both an office space as well as a warehouse. The main goal was to find an existing warehouse space. If you look at the exhibit, which has the actual drawing of the plan, Exhibit A, I'm sorry. There are six thousand square feet, that includes an office space, which is, in this building, we are maxed out for office space. We have hired a lot of people, and I think we experienced that over the spring and summer, all the people that we've brought onboard. We now have to put them here when they're in the administrative offices. Operationally, my department doesn't need to work out of gates. We are on the road most of the time, we are out in the field a lot of times. So, for us, we can move to a space like this and actually manage the inventory. So, there's both short-term and long-term inventory. There's that inventory in this warehouse that we put aside and maybe look at once in a while, maybe use annually, then there'll be inventory that keeps coming in and out as projects occur. So, one of, two, one of these locations, I think we spoke about this last time we did the presentation, was one of them is two thousand square feet, it is separate, it is walled off, it has its own entrance. That can be used for high-value stores, that can be for storage items that maybe a vendor's using, and they need, like, this weekend, we had cameras that we needed to be stored. They can be given access to that area, they can work out of there and keep the board of ed. And our inventory is separate. So, it gives us two working spaces, but it gives us a little under eight thousand square feet to work with for storage, which is exactly what we need at the moment. So, you take a look at these, Exhibit A. So, ultimately, the thought is to sign this lease and move, clean up as many of the closets, the warehouse space, the basements in our schools as we can, free up for other usage, so that we can get more supplies and keep more supplies on hand. Or, if need be, a lot of the closets that are currently being utilized, that if we need them for some sort of alternative space, whether it be for learning or just for office space, it can be utilized for that. There are many rooms in the schools that can be used for staff for various reasons that currently aren't being used, just because there's large items being stored there that don't need to be in the school, we can move them back and forth then.
Good question. Do you have, like, an inventory system that you're planning on, like, instituting to say, like, this is all our paper, this is how much paper we have, this is all our glue sticks, this is...
Ultimately, that's where I'd like to go. And I'd actually like to go with some sort of coded system. I'd love to go with an asset disposal form. I actually brought that up about a week and a half ago. So, not only with the, with the assets that come in, the inventory that comes in, but also what do we do with that inventory when it's expired, no longer usable?
Right.
But we have to get rid of it, and if someone were to ask, what happened with those tables that were bought fifteen years ago, we would say on this day, and that's usually a barcoded inventory, that's something we would look at. We put a code tag specific for C S D M D, and when it comes in, it gets coded and tagged, and there's software out there that does it, and then when it gets discarded, it gets tagged as well. Ultimately, that's where I'd love to go, but right now, we just don't have that centralization, and this would offer us that path to centralization. I really think that's an important step for us getting there, especially with cost controls, knowing what we have for tables. You look at the containers, the containers, they're the direct result of the fact that we do not have this kind of storage available to us, so we just need to bring in containers. And though containers are nice, they're not environmentally controlled, and they're not really safe when you see them around our school. So, I would love to get a lot of the items in the containers out of there and put them here if we can.
Ten-year lease? We're allowing...
Ten-year with two five options. Because this is long-term, and you really, we want to get in there, we want to negotiate. The longer you negotiate a lease, the better off you can get. But ultimately, we want to know where our inventory is going, and to be moving in around so many years, you know, every five years, it's just not feasible. So, the thought process is long-term.
Just clarifying question on the square footage, the floor area is eight thousand fifty-two percent, the floor area of the building is twenty-seven fifty.
So, we just see that there is another building, actually, it's owner-occupied building. So, that twenty is actually, the rest of the remaining is thirty-three percent. We see our breakout. That is the remainder of the owner. The owner has a...
We're just leasing eight thousand fifty.
Correct, correct. That's what you're talking about.
As I say, because my only concern is typical past behavior. Like, the next two years, we're kind of in a decent financial situation, right? Anytime we've had to cut money, where does it come from?
So...
Facilities, right? So, that's my only concern of a, of a, of a ten-year. Not that it's a lot of money, and I think once we actually, it will probably save us money when you know what we have for inventory, but...
Right. So, if you, if you, if you get that down with a plan of true asset inventory control, I really think there is savings there, and I think understanding where we are, and being able to buy in bulk, so if we do even have the storage, you know, when you buy larger, certain items, we just broke up that, and there's certain times of the year, buy certain custodial or PPE items, and knowing that we have that ability to buy in bulk and to negotiate better pricing other than a few cases at a time. And our schools, to be honest, do not say, I'm going to give you a pallet of black bags, or two pallets of black bags for the year. They just don't have the ability right now, and that's what I like to...
And the store, they can't find, they can't figure out where they left it, so they got to go order more.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
I just say, I was looking at the ten-year lease as well and questioning that, but I also, like, calculated it out, it's two point four percent per year, which honestly is a pretty good rate in terms of, like, that's right near Consumer Price Index, that's pretty low. So, being able to get that, and, you know, we never know what the market is going to do. I can't see the district conceivably being able to fund and build a storage facility or the city to be able to build a permanent storage facility in that ten-year period, but at least they'll give us ten years, knowing that maybe four or five years from now, we start thinking about what is the end goal, right? And having the options in the lease for that extension also helps, because then if, at the end of five, ten years, we know that we want to pursue having our own, you know, Gil, you'll still be on the board then.
Great. One of the things I've learned is stability when dealing with the public sector of board of ed, is you really want to know the stability, you want to know where your costs are long-term, and you hate to see these giant fluctuations, and you have to renegotiate it. So, that was part of the thought process as well.
You have trouble, you'll just cut Gil's salad.
Yeah, just cut my salad.
Okay. We done with this? Any further questions? All right. The motion move through?
We need to vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed? Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries. Let's move on to Adam D.
Make a motion to approve purchase order, bid waiver, and contract between, between Petalina School District of New Britain and New York Security Solutions for replacement of civilian surveillance cameras at Lincoln Elementary School in the amount of fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars and sixty-four cents. Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion. Kevin, you want to present?
Thank you. So, while we were, in the past month, discussing the high school, we had a failure of the Lincoln school camera system. We got a call to replace the, just the server alone with, for thirty thousand dollars. And that would be to maintain the existing system, which, you know, we've had other issues with both the aging of the cameras, as well as retention link. So, this proposal is to convert Lincoln over next, and Lincoln was not on the list next, as we were going to go to school by school and discuss needs size-wise, square-footage-based. But at this time, I would like to ask that Lincoln, being the school, we can convert next, both because of the urgency and the need there.
How many cameras is this one? I'm sorry. Sorry, I was just... And this the same company? This is the same company that we, for the high school?
This is the same company that's currently there, correct.
Is it, I was just going to say, is it twenty-eight cameras? That's it?
Yes, I believe it is. So, it's, it's, it's changing light for light.
Makes sense, it's a smaller building.
Also, if anybody has any questions, I'm here.
The disembodied voice, yes.
That is great, you're in from, uh, New York Security.
Yes, I'm the infamous contractor.
And realize you called in, Greg. I know I started to see you, was sure you were here. So, that was for, that's for twenty-eight cameras, correct?
Yeah, so, it is, it's a direct swap. So, those are all existing cameras with existing cabling, all quite old legacy cameras that are going to be replaced for a modern unit.
And these would have the storage of thirty days, so these are the newer cameras?
Yes, sir.
And this is for a three-year license, same as the high school, correct?
Yep. Three-year license and one-year physical coverage in terms of onsite service.
And they, as far as the install, since we need the camera system over there, this would be fairly quickly turnaround?
Yes, correct.
These are, we're required to have cameras, correct? For the school?
No.
Technically not required.
I know it's a safety issue.
Yes, they're wired, wired, they're wired.
Okay. Any discussion of this?
I just have one more question. Is that inside and outside those cameras?
It's all existing, it's just light change light for light. Those are the existing number of cameras currently at that building. As we go through, if we do find one or two, what we call blind spots, spots that weren't, once we were up and running, we can, we can just add those in. But we haven't, we haven't had that issue.
Further questions? Okay, we have a second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
One abstention, okay. That was Nick abstaining. And all, that's, motion carries. Let's move on to Adam C.
Oh, approve purchase, oh, make a motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver for emergency lighting repairs in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
We have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any aye? Go ahead.
So, as this is a large number, I just want to reiterate, you look at lighting services, the original quote, when they do their annual inspections for us, this was written up, this is the quote. In their quick summary, they said, during our recent inspection and testing of emergency light equipment, we found many defective ballast, batteries, and entire units inoperable. Many of these fire code requirement pairs were written up in years past as well. So, this is a cumulative of a deferred maintenance item. We had car riders at Smith School last week, and it came to light, at the same time as this work, you know, the inspections were going on, the quote was being built, it really came to light that the building went dark and the emergency lights are not working. This is truly a life safety issue, this is emergency lighting, exit lighting, making sure should the power go off in the building, people can exit the building safely, no trip hazards, and if there is a fire issue as well. So, this is our, as you can see, they have the D A S, the state contract, so it's RFP. We're not going to get better than the state contract, we go off state contract. Their request is to take this amount and get all of the school up to speed, up to code for light safety.
Close back to my past comment of where do we take money from? Facilities. And here we are. Okay, sorry. There's more comment than...
Just for a point of information, and I'm going to harp on this a little bit, because it's my last meeting, and I, technically, this wouldn't require a bid waiver, because it is a state contract, and we are allowed to substitute in things that are on the state contract bid. It would be a purchase order approval because of the size of it. A lot of times, I know that things get put on the agenda as bid waiver and/or purchase order just to cover our bases, because it is a little bit tricky to understand what the difference is. You know, it's the same thing for a lot of things with professional development or consultants, which technically are something you are not obligated to bid, therefore don't need a bid waiver. But the state contract list does exist for us to be able to substitute in the place of bids, especially for common equipment and other things. So, even though it says it on our agenda, technically, this really only needs to be a purchase order approval.
Oh, I got you.
Harp, harp, harp.
Harp.
I'll get off my soapbox now.
You text me next, next meeting, when it's on there, and say, Gil, you're...
I'll give you a list.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tina? Any abstentions? Okay. Move on to next item. Okay. Adam D.
Adam D. The Policy Committee moves to approve revised policy six-one-six-two-point-three, citywide group testing program, which I believe is also actually being renamed in the new policy to district-wide student assessment policy.
Second.
Okay. Is there a discussion on this item?
Just really generally, the purpose of this is, this policy, as you can see, originally dates from well before No Child Left Behind, and before mandatory state testing was a thing. So that is, that is why this policy probably originally existed. Um, the policy committee in reviewing it, thought that it would be good to articulate the reasons that we feel testing is appropriate and doing sort of district-wide testing is appropriate and what it should be used for. Um, and just outlining it in there. It's, it's very similar to the old policy. It's just cleaning it up slightly. And we just wanted to leave it on the books in case in some weird alternative universe in the future, state testing magically went away, which I don't see happening, but but, you know, it'd be nice to have something in there that would give us some guidance in that eventuality.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Policy committee moves to strike board policy four-one-one-eight-point-two-three-one, four-two-one-eight-point-two-three-one, staff smoking, drinking and drug use on school premises.
Second.
I will explain, we are not actually making it. No, we're not making it so that people can smoke, drink and do drugs on school premises is this is actually, what we noticed is there was redundancy between this policy um, and another one. They actually even had the same number. My guess is in when we tried to consolidate and narrow down policies, that this was just something, that there were two previous policies for whatever reason. Um, so we looked through with shipment and Goodwin, they looked at the two of them, they sort of kept what, you know, is the most important pieces, what we are legislatively required. And they recommended striking this one and moving all of the relevant information into one policy, which is our next item of business.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, uh, the policy committee moves to approve revised policy four-one-one-eight-point-two-three-one and four-two-one-eight-point-two-three-one, drug-free workplace.
Second.
Uh, there's a redlined version of this, but it is heavily redlined and blue lined with things that have been moved around. Uh, for those of looking at the PDF, the blue is new language, the green is relocated language and the red is struck-through language. Um, there is a clean version afterwards that may be the best thing to, uh, look at. And that starts on page two forty-three of the board packet. But this up, this included several updates, including the fact that, uh, the legalization of marijuana, the prevalence of e-cigarettes and electronic nicotine delivery systems, vaping, et cetera, um, and all of that. So it was working to just bring it up to code with a lot of the newer state legislation and expectations.
Just to piggyback off like cannabis is legal, maybe we need to make like some announcement during sporting events that maybe it is legal, but it's still not legal in the stands because it's still smoking.
Yep.
That's downwind.
Well, no, like comes downwind. I'm on the field.
So who are you about to talk about?
I'm in the stands. I know.
I see, right there, right.
I'm on the phone.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Motion to approve a, uh, the policy committee moves to approve re, uh, revived pol, revised policy six-two-zero-zero, adult education.
Second.
Okay.
What is this?
Uh, so the two changes are under, there was a change in state law that adult education is for those who are seventeen years or older. Um, so that was one change that was brought to our attention. And then the other change to the policy is changing the word in the final paragraph from shall to may because there are certain things that we are required to put in our adult education program and offer. Um, ESL, adult basic education, high school completion and, uh, you know, a couple other programs, the United States Citizenship Program, et cetera. But anything else that we want to offer above and beyond that is optional. The way the previous, with the word shall there, made it seem like we were obligated to offer more than that. And unfortunately, that may not always be the situation we're in. So putting it as may just allows the board, if they needed to make changes to the programming we offer at adult ed, that we could do so.
Any comments or questions on this?
My recollection would, thirty or so odd years ago, when I moved here, that there was a catalog that came out of various, you could take a bike repair class with Cliff Parker or, uh, you know, basket weaving and photography and stuff.
Second.
And that all sort of went out the window when the cost of printing the catalogs got.
No.
No?
There's a story behind it.
There's another story behind that, okay.
Yeah. It had to do with personnel, so.
Okay.
It was right in the shelf.
So my understanding was that there was a, that those, uh, classes that had, uh, charge to them, did that just cover the cost of the classes or did it actually?
And the teachers, because they made whatever that thirty-two, fifty or thirty-four, whatever. They made that amount of money per hour.
Yeah. Did it produce any sort of profit for the adult ed program to?
No, but it, it paid, it paid for itself.
Paid for itself.
Cost neutral.
And there were grants, you know, but for that part of it, those were, it sustained itself. But, you know, if you didn't get enough students, then you couldn't run your class.
Yep.
And then part of it had to do with, when we got new administration, because Dr. Ove on it for years, and then we got a new administrator and, and secretary and the work, the old secretary left and she was the one that put that thing together by herself.
Uh huh.
And the other person wasn't willing to work that hard, so it went by the wayside.
I say we wasn't like that.
I think it was.
I watched my parents take those classes and everything, right? It was just opportunity.
It was a way to give a community.
I do think it's good community building to have, to have that option to go meet some people they didn't know and share a common interest. And I sort of wondered, you know, I'd heard a rumor that it was about the cost of the printing, but but it wasn't the cost of the printing, it was the putting it all together.
Yeah, it required a lot of work and the person that was the secretary was just a really hard worker and believed in it. And so she made it happen. The other person that took her place, like didn't have the skill and didn't have the interest.
But it strikes me that, you know, you could now do, you don't have to, the cost of printing and mailing and all, that could all be done virtually.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it could, it could work. You know, we lost all our vendors because then they just start not doing the things that need to be done if people didn't.
Yeah. So anyway, it's an interesting idea. Um, but, uh, yeah, we should change it to shall rather, I mean, to may rather than shall. So any further conversation on this topic? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Policy committee moves to approve revised policy five-one-three-one-point-zero-zero, which is the student discipline code.
Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion and discussion.
Uh, this had not been updated in, in a while, over, uh, close to nine years. Um, and it's mostly just updating the language to make it more reflective of the transition the district has made towards a focus on, you know, growing students, restore, you know, um, growing students' ability to, you know, deal with conflict, conflict resolution skills and less on putting a moralistic bend on the language. So like replacing good student behavior with appropriate behavior in school, things like that. Um, and just trying to make it more aligned with the district's mission and vision.
Just a quick comment, maybe? So the school, school discipline, school discipline code, right? Isn't there technically like, I don't know if there's a code of ethics that go along with school, but like there's a student handbook that says these are things you cannot do and if you violate these things, these are things that you're gonna get suspended for. But we're actually removing that from the policy?
That wasn't actually in the policy part of the statement. That was more in the administrative regulations and that would still be there. The admin, like, that wasn't, if you look, that's not actually in the policy.
Students whose conduct violates the school district rules and regulations shall be subject to appropriate discipline by school authorities in a manner which reflects consideration of both boards' com, commitment to maintaining safe and early schools. Disrupts the educational process. So you're just saying at any point, if it's unable to meet the expectations required to make safe and positive school climate, they may
Be subject to progressive discipline, which again is more in line with what we actually do. There are certain things that, um, where there are, like, there are other policies on school weapons, um, drug use on campus, things like that, where there are state mandated.
Yep.
Um, but this is more about general classroom, uh, like general conduct.
And I guess we should take it as a step of progress that we no longer need to say that corporal punishment is.
Well, I see, we left that.
Oh, no, we left that, we left that, we actually talked about possibly striking that, but we figured we would leave it in just in case.
Corporal punishment is not allowed as part of this.
It's, it's on the bottom of the new
Oh, okay, sorry.
Next page.
That's why I'm not seeing that.
It's all by itself there. We did put it at the end because we felt it was a no dub.
Yeah.
But, you know.
But, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I know this is Nick's final meeting, but I would almost motion ta, um, table this for a second read.
I second that.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
Uh, postpone, Captain Clark.
Postpone.
Postpone for a second read.
Postpone for a second, sorry. Postpone for a second read.
Okay. So do we need to vote on postponing? Yes. Okay. Uh, we have a motion to postpone this. Do we need to second on that or no?
I second.
You second, okay. All in favor of postponing this to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All, any opposed?
Nay.
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 Two nays. Okay. Three, three nays, sorry. Three nays.
I'm sorry, do it three? It's four.
Okay. Let's see the nays again.
Nay.
One, two, three, and.
Tony, were you a nay or you're not a nay?
No, I just find cameras in the air.
I realize.
Just don't do that at an auction.
I did that once, my husband would get against each other.
Okay. So the motion to postpone carries. And, uh, we are going to skip item I?
A motion to refer item I back to committee.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, policy committee moves to approve new policy sixty-three-hundred, remote learning.
Second.
Here we have a second motion.
Uh, this is a very short policy, um, that allows the district, um, ba, basically, so it allows the district to offer remote learning in a short list of reasons that have been approved by the state. Um, the policy's also worded, uh, to reflect the fact that the state has been constantly updating and shifting the guidelines on this. So it allows the district to develop procedures to enact the policy pursuant to state guidance and to change it, to change their guidelines as that guidance changes, because the state may change it from one month to the next. So we know that eventually the state is planning on allowing high school students to have a remote learning option and that they're looking at other possibilities for, uh, remote learning. So this also creates sort of a placeholder holder space in our policy for when that stuff sort of starts to come out.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm just abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay. Gail is abstaining.
I can't form an opinion at this point.
Motion to refer items K through N back to personnel committee for further discussion.
Second. Any discussion on that?
No, I think that's a given.
Uh, this was at the request of administration because, just because of a kerfuffle with how we, how we've typically moved things through the committee review process, these didn't get committee review. The administration felt they could wait till they had full, a chance for the committee to review them.
Okay. All in favor of bringing this back to personnel? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Oh, uh, motion to approve retention bonus for full-time employees that worked through COVID-nineteen revised.
Second.
Kevin, you want to talk about this?
Yes, um, we talked about this in finance and personnel. It's a slight revision from that committee. We, um, many school districts out the country are doing things for their, um, employees that worked through COVID last year. Uh, this was really mirrored after, um, geez, what was it? Was it Raleigh? No, Durham, Durham, North Carolina. And after, after the fact, I, I went through Durham stuff. I actually went through, um, the publications and all that. And I found out really the, the thousand dollar was an after-tax thousand dollars. Initially, we thought it was a thousand dollars, but what, reading the publication, it was important to make sure all their employees received approximately a thousand dollars after tax. So what I did here is, it equates about fourteen-fifty, um, per employee. And if we look at our employees in our school districts, um, if you look at their single and so forth, most of them have a, with the retirement, the social security or Medicare, um, either MERS or TRB, their, their cost is somewhere in the twenty-five percent to thirty-five, thirty-seven percent range. So in reality, what I'm proposing here is the fourteen-fifty. The lower-paid employees will be taking home a little greater amount because of course their tax implications are a lot less. And really the lower-paid employees with tax implication with retirement and so forth, it's probably somewhere about twenty-five percent. I can, I can give you the numbers. Um, if you look at, um, the federal tax, um, guide for, um, lower employees, um, they're paying about twelve percent for federal taxes, another five percent for state taxes. Um, for the MERS contribution to six and a half percent and for Medicare is one point four five. So that comes up to twenty-four point nine five percent or twenty-five percent. The higher-paid employees, um, which many of them are in TRB, or not TRB, they're paying a, a federal tax of somewhere in the twenty-two, twenty-two percent range. Medicare is one point four five percent, TRB people are paying eight and a quarter and the state tax is five and a half percent. So that comes up to about thirty-seven and a quarter percent. So I really backed into the number, if you can see down below, at the fourteen-fifty, at twenty-five percent, the after-tax payment that one employee, the lower-paid employees receive approximately a thousand eighty-seven dollars, where the higher-paid employees will see probably close to nine thirteen. So if you average them out, it's a thousand dollars. So that's where I, I thought it was fair just to make it, um, you know, equitable, everybody gets fourteen-fifty. But of course, the person that pays less in taxes, he or she, the lower-paid employees, will be having more in their pocket. So that's what I'm proposing. Um, you know, we're trying to reward the employees that were here for the past year plus. We've hired a lot of new employees this year. No, they would not be eligible for it. It's for the people that worked with us for last year. We continue working for this year and the payment will be made somewhere, um, I think in April, right before the April vacation. So it'll be a March, mid-March, late March, early April payment.
To help the people taking a spring break.
Yes. So it would, there was a change and I, I found that change later on. That's what I'm recommending, you know, revising what I gave you earlier.
And this is being paid out, which part of mine?
Well, it could pay out two sets, like. Well, it can pay out two sets. Like Durham, North Carolina, it did qualify for the ESER II or ARP or whatever you call it. We're probably going to recommend doing that. We may have money left in our local budget. I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, say we do not. So it can be paid out either or. We'll probably try to put it in ESER. We have found out this year with our ESER funds, we do have, you know, one of the things we found out this year, I think Superintendent will let you know that, you know, we've hired a lot of people, but people are jumping ship from one job to another. And we found out in the district, it's just not teachers. It's a combination. So we're trying to, you know, give our employees that are sticking out with us something. It's not something that, you know, it's just, it's a gratitude. So we do have, we do have surplus in our operating budget. I'm going through it right now. So I think either or, we'll try to put it in the ARP, but we may pull it back to local at the end of the day. Because you have to remember too, with the ARP funding, ESER II funding, if we don't use it this year, we can use it next year.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
I think this is great. I mean, I think it's a conversation happening actually even in other sectors as employers are hiring, struggling to hire, and they're giving hiring bonuses. In school districts, it's happening. I know, I see it starting to happen here. And people who have stuck it out and been loyal are like, you know, where's my bonus, right, for all the extra, especially the extra time that went into transitioning from in-person to online and kind of all those unmeasured hours. It's almost not a bonus, but a kind of, you know, the, yeah, back pay for something that probably should have been acknowledged. So, yeah, I think that's major, and not only as an acknowledgement, but just a fair thing to do, right, job-wise, and an incentive to stick around. If we've got one in four people potentially leaving, at least in districts that look like ours, it's a good way to incentivize people to stick around.
I agree. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Motion to refer item P back to personnel committee.
Second.
Same reasoning as before.
Okay. You have a second? Any discussion on this item? All in favor of moving this back to personnel?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Item Q, operations, approved purchase order bid waiver and contract between New Board of Education and Connecticut Association of Board of Education, Inc., paid for strategic communication services, $60,000. This was revised since committee.
Second.
Mr. Kanata is on line to speak to--
Matt, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. This is, this is for, through Kate, who had reached out to us after everything, no, sorry, after everything was going on in the beginning of the school year, and wanted to offer more resources to us to really just spread the positive of what's going on. It was mentioned earlier tonight that there is, there is a lot of good happening in the school district that far outweighs what the media and social media wants to report. And this was their way of offering, you know, additional resources, several people, company, and saying, you know, partner with them, and through other media platforms, through social media, through traditional media, through radio, work with them, and we can push out the good that you're doing within this school district. So really, this is about that. This is to really highlight everything that we're doing. And we already, you know, this already be passed. We already have a robust plan in place to aggressively hit the ground over the next several months to just flood the airwaves and every media platform possible, really with everything good that was going on.
Okay. More discussion on this?
I definitely think it's much needed this year. Next year, maybe when things calm down, maybe not. But I'm all about, like, tooting out a horn and cheering on for our positives. But two years, eh, might be a little much. But I'm still kind of for it.
Okay, yes.
It sounds like it would be a good start to laying a foundation, to doing this strategically going forward. And I'll share, you know, with some of the work I do with other districts. One thing I actually noticed was a board of education having a communications committee. And they do meet, like the other committees, and strategize and put out a newsletter. And so there are communications people from the district and all of the different departments reporting things that happened. And this board committee actually leads the work of sharing the information out to the community. And that's a very good way to make it long-term sustainable. But this is cave and, you know, training and whatever from them.
Yeah.
This may be something you want to tie into. I don't know how this is set up, but--
I like that, yeah.
So that then it's a start, but it's always looking at sustainability, right? Like, you don't want to depend on consultants forever. I've always argued against that in every way. But if you don't know how to kind of start up, you can use that help. And then the point is to build capacity and be able to do it.
Nobody reads the newsletters.
I hope Matt heard them. Sure he heard them.
I like that idea. You'll know.
I will. Yeah, I hope I remember them.
Okay.
Nick will remind you.
Further discussion on this item?
Yes. I just want to say, like, we've said multiple times this evening, there's a lot of good that goes on here. You know, there's a lot of amazing things we have, our high school academies, our, you know, our sports, our, you know, arts. There's the amount of, you know, why am I blanking on terms? AP courses we offer.
Right.
Right, there's a ton of what we have. I constantly am hearing how professional and dedicated our stage crew at the high school is when outside organizations come in. Like, there's a lot of great things that we've been doing as a district for a long time. And, you know, the magnet schools and some of the other organizations, they put money into messaging and marketing and partially out of necessity, but it also means that they get a brand out there. And we've tried to do a lot more. And I think, honestly, I think Matt and--
Powell.
Powell have done amazing work over the last several years of creating some really good campaigns and messaging that have really started to bring that forward. So I hope that if the board does approve this, that Matt and the others are working really closely with these consultants and picking up a lot of the tips and tricks. And again, to what Dr. Sim said, building that sustainability.
I like that idea though.
Okay. Any further thoughts on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item R, approved purchase order bid waiver and contract between Consolidated School District of New Britain and Torch for coaching monitoring license in the amount of $32,000. There was no committee review last time.
Okay, anybody--
Sure. So this is, this is time-sensitive. I have Chris Badenhop, our school readiness liaison, on. This is for school readiness dollars. Chris?
Good evening, everybody. Sure. So over the summer, the Office of Early Childhood gave an administrative grant, or excuse me, gave administrative funds, they call them supplemental admin funds, to each liaison for added responsibility over the last year, similar to what you guys were just talking about. And they were very specific in how you could use these funds. It had to be specific for the liaison youth in building up equitable market, or excuse me, monitoring, and working around those supports or professional development for the liaison specifically. And so in talking with the superintendent and with Amy Anderson and others, one of the things that we've been wanting to do to build up quality around coaching and monitoring is this online platform through Torch. And so the funds were difficult to come by originally, but with this, with these funds, we're looking to order licenses for all 40 of our school readiness classrooms with the addition of 10 extra slots, one for myself, and nine others for different consultants and coaches that are within different projects within school readiness that are all working with our 40 classrooms. And so it made sense to do this not only for this year, but because we have to use these funds within this fiscal year, it made sense to put, to go down further the next five years so that we would have these to sustain this project as opposed to enjoying them for this year and then not having them, right? So these are one-time stipend funds that are coming at least at the moment. And so we want to take advantage of these funds. We've already got the dollars, and so it's just how we use them. And it was approved by OEC and our school readiness council.
So I understand, like, why we have to use the funds, but what, I guess I don't understand what Torch is. Like, what is it for?
Sure. So it's got a lot of facets to it, but it's, it's like a host kind of platform. And so myself, our coaches, our consultants are using the same forms across the project. It's communication back and forth with the teachers. It has real-time video. So if I'm taking a video of a teacher, and then we're going to review it afterwards, there's in-time comments and captions and things like that that we can do. So you're not searching a whole video for the feedback, but you're timestamping it so that they can look rid of that feedback and go back and forth. Because honestly, you know, I'm a coach at heart, even though that's not what I get to do too often. But one of the biggest drawbacks is that time is difficult to come by, especially with the staffing crisis. And so being able to sit and talk with teachers at the times that they can get out of classing is tough. And so this allows us to give good feedback in time for videos and things like that within this capability of a program.
I got it.
To have a good communication back and forth. And when they're able to view it, whether it's that time or later on or different things, it's all within this, within Torch.
Chris, can I just also point out too, this is our preschools across New Britain, right? It's not just Board of Ed preschools. So this is networking, this is all of them. It's HRA, it's YW, it's all of our--
Yep.
So that's--
Right. And we also are enhancing through the Science Center as part of our consultants, our executive function, our social emotional parent model consultant. So there's a lot of different people that are joining together in one area. So it's a resource for the teachers to go to one stop to find the resources and connections for all of these things. So that's what a lot what we're paying for the licenses too.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any discussion on this item?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, yes. So what could OEC--
I worked that on this project, so I was just going to say.
Okay. Let's move on to the next.
A motion to refer items S and T back to the finance committee for review.
Second.
Same reasoning as before.
Oh, you have a second on that? All in favor of moving this back to committee?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Item U, approved purchase order bid waiver contract between Mr.--
Raleigh.
Raleigh. Santiago watching leaders in education and Consolidated School District of New Britain, the amount of $30,000. This is the funding sources Commissioners Network. Looked at the last one. Second?
Yes, second. Okay. So you have a second and motion. Any further discussion?
So is this like coaching of leaders or--
This is, this is, again, the next three items, I just want to couch it with, we bypassed committee because they are time-sensitive. It's Commissioners Dollar. By the time we get the contract from them, committee is already met. Then we'd have to wait another month and a half. And one of our struggles has been historically spending down the dollars we get and the allotted time we have because of the lapse in time with contracts going over to council, being reviewed, et cetera. And so, yes, this is a continuation, actually. This is the second year that this firm has come in to coach, actually, Ms. Robles and her team at West. Mike, did I get that all right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Some of you might remember Mr. Santiago as the principal at Small in New York. Okay. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item V, approved bid waiver and contract between Capital Region Education Council and New Britain Public Schools for instructional support, $12,600. Funding source is Commissioners Network.
A little explanation on this one?
Mike, my memory has failed me now.
Yeah, similarly, this is, this is a Commissioners Network contract. It's a continuation of, I believe, the Mass--
Yeah, I can't remember the name.
She's been working with the Mass Department under Commissioners Network brand. And continuing, this is the second year of their three years. It shows two middle schools in Small in--
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And motion carries.
Item W, approved purchase order and bid waiver for emotionally interactive student development program for Slade Middle School, $83,500, school improvement grant, and Commissioners Network grant.
Yeah.
You're up, Todd.
I love, all right, so I, a little break it up there. Good evening, everybody. This is a continuation. We piloted the program work last year with Lori Thirio. In regards to the student development program at Slade within a number of classes, we had great feedback from our students and our families regarding that. So we want to expand it this year to 240 students throughout the entire year. Students will complete the baseline assessment for personality assessments, identify types of learners they are. Staff will do the same. The reason why we have the students and the staff doing this is to continue to foster stronger relationships between teachers and students. Additionally, we have school counselors are trained in the assessment delivery and analysis to deliver on a yearly basis to come, just to create a program of sustainability. We're looking up to three, up to 300 students to participate in six-week courses that will cover the following topics of discovering personality strengths, learning and leadership styles, looking forward to career planning, understanding goals, career planning, public speaking, time management, financial literacy, etiquette skills, mentors, and time, and time management, public speaking. So what we're looking to do is really align the POG of the district to continue to further strengthen our students, prepare them for their high school, high school spirit and career to college career readiness piece. You have any questions? I know I said a lot there.
Questions? Okay, not seen any questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
A motion to add an item to the agenda. We have a purchase order bid waiver in the amount of $178,870. eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, and this is for, uh, boilers at Pope John Paul.
Second.
Okay, we have a seconded motion. Kevin, you want to explain what this is all about?
To add it to the agenda.
To add to the agenda, okay, sorry.
It's okay, we had to mess up at least once.
Right, okay, so, um, all in favor of adding this item to the agenda? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, go ahead.
Motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver of, uh, boilers in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy thou-, uh, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion. Now, Kevin.
Thank you. I just received this last week, uh, last Friday, so I apologize for how late it is. But this is a very important item, it is a large number item, but currently at Pope John Paul, there are two boiler rooms. Uh, boilers, there's three boilers for the entire school that are all original to the building. Uh, one boiler room which feeds out the building has two boilers, so it has a redundancy, but there is another boiler room that only has one boiler currently in it. That boiler, uh, all three boilers are antiquated. They do need replacement, uh, long-term, we were looking to replace them, have a discussion, um, past the winter, but they do need constant maintenance. Boiler supply is almost supply chains currently in the world. Um, we have never seen anything like this before. Uh, I, we cannot get boilers. Right now, we have a boiler project where we replace the boilers at the schools, um, over the summer. We do have boilers in the schools, boilers have singles, but the other, uh, the redundancy, the secondary boilers for the schools have been delayed until January, uh, because of the steel and the iron and basically there's no material that people can get for these. There is a big risk with Chamberlain. Uh, Chamberlain in that single boiler room, uh, it already has two plates that have issues due to, um, the feed units. We are making, we will get through, we've been getting through, but I can't guarantee we're going to make it through the coldest parts of the month of the year. Um, my job is to bring risk and let people know what the risk is. And there's a very significant risk during a normal year, I would say, we can think about it, we can, we can go a couple more months and see where we're at. We don't have that luxury. I don't want to be alarmist, but we've been looking for a replacement boiler since the start of school. We've been looking for something to put in there should that boiler fail and it just came last week, we were able to secure a boiler.
Is this where Alder, Roman, Sovedra called in, was at last meeting and talked about the boilers at Pope John Paul?
Right, so the boilers were, the boilers were in lockout prior to us getting there. They were in lockout because, I don't know who worked on the boilers, but, uh, it was a, it was a duct and exhaust problem.
Yeah, okay.
The way they had changed the duct, it was actually venting back into the boiler room. So I'm not a hundred percent sure it wasn't there, we didn't own the building or, or leased the building at the time, but there's probably a CO issue, uh, or some sort of blowback in the building where people were smelling combustion and it's going to lockout. We repaired that, those boilers are good, but we did inspection in there. These are old steam boilers, very hard to find companies that still work in old steam and water systems. Um, most of them are air systems in the newer buildings, right? So this company was able to secure a boiler, uh, actually, we would need, tonight, what I'm asking is that we buy the boiler, we bring the boiler, whether it be stored down in the boiler room, in the, where there's one, there's two rooms, in the single boiler room, boiler room we'll call it, or we can store it at their facility for media, but it would be ready to go should in January we lose that boiler or we lose one of the other boilers and the other one can't pick up. It is a, an insurance policy. Um, over time, it will be, it will be put in, no doubt, because we have it there for a couple more years, uh, plus there are other, um, renovations right behind it, so it does make good sense long-term, again, knowing that this building will be heated properly. But this would be an insurance policy. Um, there is abatement that needs to be done, that's how old these boilers are, not only just in the room and the wraps, but also the boiler itself is in abatement issue. So when that boiler gets ripped down, well, it would be technically an abatement. Um, there is a new boiler feed unit that needs to go in, there are new burners that will need to go in. Um, so part of this proposal, this proposal is actually for two boilers, the one-seventy-eight eight-seven-oh. There was a secondary packet, uh, which had the, the project summary that you have that. That was a twenty-seven, I believe, twenty-seven page document which goes through what the actual project is. Um, it's, uh, actually thirty-five page, I don't know if it's there. But that propos-, this is the proposal, so what you see is a summary sheet, cost, but the proposal here actually defines the work that will be done. And in that, if you look, it's actually for two boilers, we cannot secure two at the time, but we can secure one today. Uh, it's actually on hold right now at Smith Boiler, um, so if we approve tonight, we can, we can purchase the boiler and get it here. Uh, long-term, if we don't need the boiler, January, we make it through and the boilers are fine. Uh, next summer, we will look at installing, putting both boilers in, getting that room, having redundancy in that area. Should that boiler fail though, there is really, currently, there is no supplemental heating that's going to heat that building, so we will lose use operation of the building.
Don't we just want to do it? We don't want to just do it? It's like, why wait for it to?
I, you don't want to do that in the middle of winter. You know, you don't, you don't want to risk it. The boilers have been there since the start, since the building, the sixties, um, they're working, you know, you don't fix what's not broken, but you do plan later on to fix.
What is that called, borrowing trouble or whatever that?
Yeah, I know, I'd love to have done it, but, uh, we will do it. We will do it next summer and we will, that's what this proposal for, so they'll use the one-seventy-eight, it's for two boilers. Boiler feed unit and the burners will be put in, so when this is approved, um, to the existing boiler, we can put the burner on and to the existing boiler, we can change the boiler feed unit. We can also put what's a heat, what's called a heat timer on there. Um, and what that does, that makes sure that the outside, basically make sure for the outside air and from our thermostat on the outside and to make sure that when the outside air hits a certain point, that the, the boiler will turn on, so we don't deal with cold buildings and cracked plates. And it's a very rudimentary system, but it's a system that doesn't currently exist and we won't be walking into, uh, cold buildings in the morning if that boiler needs to come on earlier to moderate and come sure the building will based on the outside air, the outside air turns nicer and then it shuts and so forth. So all those components are part of this project, so they will be put into the existing boiler and then if that, should that existing boiler, when its plates crack or fail, we'll have another one to put in. So we'll do piecemeal work as much as we can. Be ready to go. Any questions on the project?
Yes, can you?
So the, the work needs to be done when the building is empty, right? So even if it's an emergency, will we have to call up school to do it or do it over a week?
Correct, so for an abatement, no one under the age of eighteen can be in the building at the time, so.
Right.
If we came to that, that's why none of this work would be done. Uh, putting the burners on is not an abatement, putting in the heat timer, the boiler feed unit, those aren't abatement issues. It's actually when the boiler gets brought down, the insulation that's on the boiler is, is hot, it's asbestos. So that would need to be removed and shut down, not have anybody in the age of eighteen in the building. That's why it's a summer planned project normally, but you never know, um, and in cold days in January, when that's calling, that boiler's working, you know, eighty percent of the day, it's best to have this on hand and at the very most, you would lose a couple days of school if you had to do an emergency abatement with an emergency install. Versus, you're in the middle of January and you can't even find a boiler at all anywhere else in the country. And trust me, we are, we, we, he has connections and he has asked everywhere around the country and he's the last, the last boilers we can get. It's really, it's not good.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next.
I just need more information. You can ask for the information. No, I'm, I'm asking an email, that's, that's good. I got it. No, it's fine, go ahead. Continue. In all honesty, the time to ask the questions are pre-vote, because once it's voted on, it's voted on. I got you. Okay.
Okay, motion carries. And we have a couple of items for, an item for information sharing.
Uh, that's just, so we recently passed a updated policy on the exemptions for, from instruction for school activities, um, and along with that, the administration had gone through and updated the administrative procedure for that policy. I think it's worth the board looking over. Again, we really, I think, did a good job of addressing both the legitimate concerns of many, you know, that some of our families have about wanting, you know, wanting to have, uh, you know, some say in some of the things that are, you know, taught and that they learn in school, but it also put it so that it actually becomes a conversation between the school district and the parents. So I, I think the way the, the form was put together just accomplishes what the policy we passed envisioned.
And, um, anybody have any other items that is allowed by law?
I actually, um, I should have asked during superintendence before, but I forgot. Um, when is the scream and stay policy going to be discussed?
So, I'm glad you asked that. So tomorrow morning, I have a DPH call, eight o'clock, me, Jackie, Mary Ellen, Mike, we all sit on the call every. The only guidance we've gotten so far is from the press release, that's it. So, you know, and I know, I know a couple of districts have acted on the press release and I'm like, eh, I've seen things change from a press release to practice in a day. So tomorrow morning, we should have information. Our hope, last week when we first heard about it, was to pull in our, our arts teachers, our music, our PE teachers for this Wednesday and start talking to them a little bit about it. It's, it's pretty, um, restrictive, right? On who gets to, um, uh, I'm going to forever say.
Screaming stay.
Yeah, we're calling them screaming stay at this point. We got just one more change, but, uh, I'll know more tomorrow morning and then I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, I, we're anticipating that's what they're going to talk about in the morning.
I agree, the press release.
Yeah, well, from press release to policy. What's that?
Using press, this is how you do it.
All right. I'll leave it to Nick or Violet to.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, second.